Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, the 2nd of October 2017. As we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the period of silent meditation, please keep in mind that our nation is in distress today. Please keep in your thoughts and in your hearts the victims of the shooting in Las Vegas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Please call the first item.
We would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. And as a reminder, the city council does not meet next Monday, October 9th, however, city offices will be open. Our first item of business are our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 11.
Would anyone like to testify on any of these items? Next item, please.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Item number one was introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Schob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items four through nine were introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Benny, seconded by John. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Schob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions.
Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 12 and 13 together. They are the application of the junction for a Class I liquor license at 1434 O Street, Suite 2, as well as the related manager application of John Barry. Should I raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
John C. Barry of 1424 O Street, Lincoln.
Well, Mr. Barry, tell us about your application.
Okay, well, I'm appealing to the commission for approval of my liquor license at 1434 O, which is right next door to my existing licensed establishment, Iguanas. The place I'm applying for has been a licensed establishment for 20 years as two different licenses. The previous tenants chose not to renew their lease, and so I'm looking to move in there since it's in close proximity and my perception is easier to manage.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Barry? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, commission, I appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 14, manager application of Scott Foley for the Lincoln Stars Hockey at 1880 North Antelope Valley Parkway.
Is anyone here to speak on this item? Like Mr. Foley? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this at all? All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item 15, application of PR Ventures LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 100 feet by 87 feet at Nebraska Book Company at 4,700 South 19th Street on October 27th between 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM.
There's no swearing in on this one?
No swearing in on this?
So please tell us about your application. What are we doing here?
So I'm Chad Carlson, 6235 Hablock Misties. We're doing an event. We're catering for an employee party for their families from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Nebraska Book Company outside, just outside their building.
Okay.
And we're doing the beverages only.
Right, so it's a private party?
Private party, employees and their families.
Okay. Questions from the council? Carl?
Yeah. Who's with you?
This is my manager in Hablock, Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Cindy?
Love you guys' establishment in Hablock. You do a good job out there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Mr. Chair saying no one, I'd move approval of items 12, 13, and 15.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Learyn. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Schob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we hold over item 14 to the next meeting.
Second.
Hold moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Schob.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 16 is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of September 1st through the 15th, 2017.
All right, is there anyone here who is wanting to speak on a claim? Then stand right up and approach the microphone.
I'll try.
Okay.
My name is Elizabeth Rhodes. I own the house and live in the house at 2346 W Street. And on August the 12th, I discovered an incursion of raw sewage into the basement of my property. In parts of my basement, it was over a foot and a half deep. It destroyed my furnace, my water heater, my washer, my dryer, power tools, clothing. And I immediately called a drain service. They could not find any blockage in my sewer, but they went to the manhole out of the corner of 24th and W and looked down, and there was sewage backed up there. So it was on the, the blockage was in the sewage, the sewer that runs down W Street. The city came out and managed to get the sewer flowing that day, and that was a Saturday, as I said. And then the city returned on Monday and worked all day with various crews and finally got the sewer unblocked. And when I filed the claim and I received a letter from the attorney saying that it was necessary for me to prove negligence on the part of the city for me to get, have this claim paid. And I can't see why it's necessary for me to prove that the city is negligent when it was obviously the city infrastructure that failed that caused this damage to my home. And I filed a claim in the amount of, well, I revised the amount at one point, $8,939.64.
Okay, are there questions for Ms. Rhodes? So what has happened since?
I refinanced my vehicle and managed to replace the furnace and the water heater and the washer and dryer. I'm currently unemployed. I'm either unemployed or I'm retired. If I can't find another job, I guess I'm retired. And I'm living on veterans' benefits for my deceased husband and Social Security.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
You bet.
Hi there, I'm Chris Bland. I live at 1561 South Cotner Boulevard.
Could you spell your name for us?
B.L.A.N.N.
Okay.
Last year, I called City Parks and Rec Forest Division, spoke to Ann, filed a complaint about a tree located in the right of way in front of my home at 1561 South Cotner. The tree, which was located between the sidewalk and the street, had several large limbs that were dead and needed to be trimmed. My neighbor, Mrs. Gloria Housel, at 1555 South Cotner, has called about the same time, the same tree for over three years, and nothing's been done about it. On the morning of Sunday, August 20th, at approximately 1:05 a.m., we had a storm roll through and the said limbs pretty much broke out of the top of the tree, knocking some of ones down on top of my truck. Let's see, next morning, a gentleman from the city stopped by and told me not to remove any debris from my truck because the city was more than likely liable for the damages. The gentleman, I only got his first name, Brian, made some calls and told me the city crew would be there to remove debris as soon as they could. I spoke to a Bill Costner, the risk manager for the city of Lincoln. He was very informative of the process that I would need to take about filing a claim with the city attorney's office for the repair of my truck. I received an estimate for the damage and fought it with the city attorney later on that week. I called every week and spoke to a Ms. Elizabeth Elliott who told me that they were extremely busy with storm damage claims, and she would get back to me as fast as they could. The Monday of the fifth week, I called and spoke to Ms. Elizabeth Elliott, and she told me that she would recommend that the city deny my claim for the truck damages. The tree was fine and the damage was from the storm, despite my calling the previous year and my neighbor calling for the past three years. I informed Ms. Elliott that she was now liable for the healthy tree, and if it fell causing damage again to the vehicle or, God forbid, a person, that she would be held responsible. The very next day, we received a card from the Parks and Rec Department stating that formerly healthy tree was now diseased or dying and posed a danger to be removed. It was cut down on the 25th of September. All I'm asking for is to pay for the damage to my vehicle.
Okay, are there questions, Mr. Bland? Okay, so your, just to review.
Yep.
You filed a complaint with the city. Do you have information to tell us when that was?
I can, I know it was October of last year, and I spoke to Ann. My neighbor, Ms. Housel, is a-
And who at the city did you talk to?
A lady named Ann that works for the Forestry Division of the Parks and Rec.
Okay. And then your neighbor also states-
She's been complaining about the tree for the past three years.
Okay. And what prompted you to complain?
There was a branch that fell close to the road, a pretty big branch, and I cleaned it up, but I called the city and said that they should prune the tree or do some maintenance to it.
Are there other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to testify on this item? Carl?
We could hear from the city attorney.
Jeffery Patrick, city attorney.
Yeah, Jeff, I think both of these merit some discussion here, if you could.
Sure. Let's begin with Ms. Rhodes. The law department would not dispute anything that she's represented to you. There was a blockage in the drain in the street. The city came and inspected it and found that the blockage was caused by a collection of grease and rags, and so that was cleaned out, and so the, we got the sewers moving again. Our records show that that particular main is being maintained on a 12-month cleaning frequency. That's our cleaning frequency with most sewer drains within the city. Occasionally, we'll have a place we'll have more trouble with, so we'll increase the frequency. We hadn't had a problem there, so it was on that one, once-a-year frequency basis. We had done a CCTV inspection back in 2012. No problems were noted at that point. So we declined to pay this claim because we had no notice prior to her having the sewer back up. And so, once we came out and did the inspection, yeah, there was blockage caused by someone flushing down some, too much grease and then rags as well.
Okay. Are there questions on this item? Cindy?
This actually goes to all the items. So, once the claim is denied by the city, could, could you just let the viewers know what their process is or what options they have?
Right. And the process is, the first step is to file a claim. So if you feel that you've suffered damage that's been caused by the city's negligence or potential negligence, and, and you'll have, we have a lot of people that come in and say, "Well, I was told by such and such department," whether it was the Fire Department or Public Works or the Forestry Division of Parks, to file a claim. And we do that not because those city employees think that the city is liable, but just because they're not in a position to judge that. They don't have all the records or knowledge of what the city has done. So our fallback position always is, if you think you may have been injured by city negligence, file the claim, we'll investigate and sort it out. And we do receive a fair number of claims, many of which, upon investigation, we pay. And some of those, after investigation, like the two we're talking about this afternoon, we made the determination that the city was not negligent, and the law department recommendation to the city council is that claim be denied. So if the council accepts our recommendation to deny the claim, the next step that they can take would be to take us to court, basically. Either hire an attorney, represent themselves, and go to court and to try to show at that stage whether or not the city was negligent.
So if they haven't filed a claim with the city, they're not entitled to do that, right? Go to court on the-
Right, that's, that's the initial step.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jane?
Mr. Bland had mentioned that his neighbor had called and complained about the tree. How are those records maintained when a citizen calls to complain about a tree limb or a pothole? How do they log those complaints?
I think in this case, it was logged just in a, in a notebook. And we did have a record of receiving calls for this particular tree. Our record shows that it was trimmed back in July of 2006, but then we received a complaint about the tree back in the summer of 2016 that we came out and looked in July of 20, July 21st of 2016. There was a hanger noted that was dangerous, that was a dead limb, and that was removed in the summer of 2016. Our records don't indicate any further complaints until we receive notification that the limb had, had fallen. We don't have a regular inspection schedule as far as inspecting every tree every six months or 12 months or even 24 months. What we do from the city, as far as our city trees, is we respond to, well, two things. One is, if we note, you've got somebody that works for the Parks Department that's driving down the street and sees a street tree where you've got a dead branch, we're going to make a notation and come back and trim that tree. But secondly, when we receive citizen complaints and about a dead tree or a dead branch, then we respond to those. And that's part of the reason why we keep these records, is to, to put together a system of going out and responding to complaints. Our records show, we received a complaint in 2016, we went out and trimmed the tree, and that we didn't receive any further complaints about the tree until after the tree limb had fallen on Mr. Bland's vehicle and did damage to it. And I would note that when he, when he told you that he had received, that Ms. Elizabeth Elliott in my office had told him, "We've got a lot of tree claims," that was in fact was true. You might recall, we had a serious storm went through. We had a lot of tree claims, some of which we're still working through. And what we find is a lot of healthy branches got knocked down in the wind. When we go out, we see a branch with leaves on it that are green, we don't jump to the conclusion it was obviously a defective branch because if the limb was still alive. Now, if we go out and we see a tree limb that doesn't have any live leaves on it, even then, we weren't necessarily on notice of it unless somebody called in. But we keep track of the calls we receive, and if we get a call and we don't get out in a timely manner and it causes damage, then I do think we're negligent. We'd recommend that claim be paid.
And then Jeff, could you explain how they came to the conclusion or the decision that the tree should be removed, then?
I, I can't tell you that. That's not in my file. I think that was a decision was made after we had made the decision to recommend denial.
Benny?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, help me understand, so there was, there was a citizen complaint, you went out and trimmed the tree. Is there some type of notice given to the citizen after that, that we've trimmed the tree now and it's back to being healthy? Or is it grandfathered in once it was declared a problem tree? Is it always going to be a problem tree forever?
No, I mean, if there's a, a branch that's, that's diseased, I mean, we're going to go out and cut down that branch. We're not necessarily going to take down the tree. And it doesn't go in our records as this is a problem tree because there's a lot of trees around with dead branches. Just because they have one dead branch doesn't mean that it's, it's sick and you need to cut it down.
Do you like send a thank you card to the citizens saying, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We've corrected the problem"?
I, I don't think that's part of our system. And we might receive four or five calls on one tree if it's, a lot of people are driving by, just like it's not uncommon for us to receive five or six calls about a pothole that's particularly obvious.
Thank you.
Learyn?
What kind of tree was it?
Don't say ash tree.
That's why I'm curious. Well, if it's ash, that would explain removal in a different way, but if it's not ash, I-
True. I, I don't know that my records show. Maybe his letter does.
It's oak.
Okay, we're hearing oak from the back of the room.
No reason to argue with that.
It seems to me that the decision to remove the tree is somewhat relevant to this, and if you don't have any information about that, I'd feel more confident voting on this, this item if we had some sort of clarification from your office, if the person who worked directly on this case has more information about the determination to remove the tree.
If this council would feel comfortable removing it from the denied resolution by amendment, we would certainly bring that back in front of the council with that additional information. We'd be happy to do that.
I think I would be interested in that if my colleagues would also.
I just want to bring one other thing up that really is relevant to the, the whole general denial process. We've received a couple calls or emails, or at least I have, for folks who aren't getting noticed until really close in time to this hearing. Got a call earlier today or an email that someone got noticed. They didn't get their notice till Friday. They were asked to check the postmark, and it was a week ago Friday. But I've noticed in my own mail, since we've been sending things to Omaha, there's a lot of times there's delayed mail. So I'm just wondering if your office has in any way adjusted with the new mail system or if maybe we should look at that?
I think that's an important, thanks for bringing that to my attention. We'll take a look at that. Certainly, we want people to get notice, and it's been our philosophy that if someone can't appear, that we would ask you to take it off of the resolution and reschedule for a time they can appear. And having said that, just received a note that Zohal Said called up my office this afternoon and said they were unable to get a ride and to appear. So I would ask if someone would make a motion to amend it and take the Said name off, and we'll add that back at a later time and maybe give them three weeks' notice, so if there's a mail delay, they have more time.
Okay. All right. John wanted first and then Jane. I'd like to shift to another denied claim, if I may. So is there one finished with the current? I would appreciate, there's Lyle Schmidt here who'd made a claim, and the gentleman has emailed the council and so forth. And I, I think it'd be helpful if you could review that matter, said he can't appear, this just doesn't work in his work schedule or whatever.
My understanding is, based on commentary that came up during the director's meeting, was that he has further information that he'd like us to consider. And if that's the case, I would appreciate a motion to amend it and take it off, and we'd be happy to consider any further information he has.
Guess that with Benny, and he's going to move that.
Okay.
And so we're additionally talking about then the Bland and the Said carrying those over, or?
Removing them.
Yeah, removing them, and then we've still got the pending claim, and we will either resolve them or bring them back before the council at a later date.
Are there any others here that we're going to be considering?
We had a written-
The written one was for Ann Romju?
And, Romju. Romju, and I think there's a situation where we received some additional information from the department, the city department, and so we wanted to reconsider that before bringing that before you.
Okay. Jane?
And then I just wanted to go back to Ms. Rhodes' claim for the sewer backup. When you review her file and her case, did it indicate that she had insurance? And I'm sorry, Ms. Rhodes, I should have asked you that question while you were up here. Does that play a factor into your denial if there was insurance?
No, it's not whether, I mean, when we do an analysis, we look for what city action or inaction occurred, whether or not the city was negligent or not. Whether or not the claimant is insured doesn't play into it. I mean, sometimes we end up writing checks to insurance companies that paid the claim, and then we were negligent, so we reimbursed the insurance company. So that doesn't play a factor into our analysis.
And I just wanted to follow up. For this particular sewer line, it receives an annual inspection or verification that there are no blockages.
That's, that's our schedule, and that is to, to have it flushed out. And then we do a more, less often, we'll go through with actually television screening, and, and that helps us not only, I mean, the jet flushing is make sure that it's washed out and cleaned out, but the, the further CCTV inspection is to see if there's any obvious defects where we're going in with a lighted camera so we can see the defects, and we know sometimes we've got problems, we need to go in and fix those.
And so this line was on just the annual routine maintenance?
As in, any sewer line would in the city that we hadn't had problems with before. Yes.
And there was no reports of any problems whatsoever in this past-
We hadn't had a blockage that I'm aware of on that line before. Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Next item, please.
All right, next is item 17, approving a conservation easement agreement between the city and PCE Incorporated to preserve the flood storage capacity on property generally located at 1821 Yolande Avenue.
Tim C. from the city law department. What you have before you is a conservation easement for property located generally east of 14th Street, south of Cornuska Highway. This is a property that, that sits on the north side of Salt Creek, and what you have is just an easement to preserve an area on that lot so that no development could happen there, so that the flood storage can continue to be used in that area. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next are our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call items 18 through 20 together. They are all related to the skate zone redevelopment project. They are approving the redevelopment agreement between the city and Access Commercial relating to the redevelopment of properties generally located at 300 North 48th Street for the construction of a hotel, retail building, parking, and other associated improvements. Item nine is amending the fiscal year 1718 CIP to authorize and appropriate $960,000 in TIF funds. And item 20 is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for, for the skate zone redevelopment project.
Members of the city council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, this is the action step on the development in what's now called the skate zone area just next to the old Cool Crest Miniature Golf Complex on North 48th Street. This is the replacement of what is a dilapidated building of 19,000 square feet with four stories of an 11,300-foot square footprint, or about 45,000 square feet, and an additional 5,600 square-foot retail building. The total amount of private sector investment is about $11 million. That generates about $960,000 in TIF that the developer would like to use towards the progress of the project. The intention of the uses is to first, of course, use the cost of issuance and then the city's administrative free fee, and then the intersection improvements that are done on 48th Street, allowing us to have a protected ingress and egress from this location available to other users in that area, and then a connection all the way to 50th Street. Then there are facade enhancements and site acquisition assistance. And this is the site that was being acquired. The new layout actually has space here that will be for the purpose of travel, so you might see it this way. Yes, this way, so that here's the protected pathway rather than the unprotected pathway here. This is the retail building. This is the hotel. This is the hotel. There are 149 stalls. This is the four-story hotel. And this is the retail building along 48th Street closer to the street, consistent with good urban planning. Street trees and landscaping, which are presently not available, a new parking lot so that it replaces the fact that there's a lot of runoff on the broken asphalt parking lot that's there now. The developer is here, as is bond counsel, to discuss the technical aspects of this. You've seen it before and it's now time to see if the city council would like to endorse the idea of this redevelopment agreement with Access Development. The developer behind the project and our LLC that we're doing business with is SCM 10X Lincoln 300 LLC. But behind that is Access Development of Omaha and they're present. What questions can I answer for you?
Jane?
Can you talk a little bit about the intersection improvements? What is anticipated?
Originally, this was the location that the city would have liked to have had for not only the 48th Street work, which is there now and I was reminded it was on both sides of the street, but also the access of this land from this land into 48th Street. So what you have is you have to be able to make this, well, here's the existing lights that cover 48th Street, but they're now going to need to adjust to this access. So we will get rid of an unprotected access here and have a protected access here. There's usually a safety factor there. Public Works has been involved. And in fact, originally, this was an area where Dick Hartsock wanted to do a redevelopment project that never came together. At that time, the city said that the developer would, the city would be responsible in the event that the redevelopment went through. It did not go through. Those adjustments were not made, but that it was the city's preference that occur if it could have that because you'd have a protected access this way. So while this covers traffic this way, it will allow us to get onto this street as well. The traffic lights will need to be adjusted for that purpose. Public Works has been involved and in fact, this is their preference for how to handle access.
So I'm guessing currently there's not a traffic signal that is facing that drive currently, correct?
That's right. I mean what there is, there's coverage for this traffic. There isn't the intention to do this. This kind of traffic is now being done here.
Okay.
And without a signal. Without a light. Other questions?
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Houston?
Greetings. Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. On behalf of Access Development, with me today is Darren Hicks, a principal of Access Development. We're, the plan amendment was in front of you last week and this really describes this site at 300 North 48th Street. That is a longtime Lincoln institution, arena skate world. Those proprietors decided to close the business last spring and are selling the real estate. This project does consist of the two primary components of the retail building with the facade fronting both 48th Street then and then also on the east side and then the four-story hotel to be developed by True Hotel. The investment is approximately $11 million. For purposes of computing our tax increment financing component, we projected, based upon the values supportable by the county assessors formula, is at roughly about a $6 million valuation for tax increment financing, which then derived the $960,000 tax increment financing component. The intersection improvements that are at the site, the one thing I did want to add to Director Landis's description is that currently the driveway does exist at the north edge of the property and it is not protected by the signal. With the relocation of the driveway to the south edge of the property, that signal will have to be replaced. That's number one. That's being paid for with the tax increment financing. So rather than a three-way signal, it will be a four-way signal covering all directions because the curb cut and driveway for Target is directly across the street. So that's why the signal will be replaced and utilized for the full four-way traffic. In addition to the traffic or the intersection improvements, site preparation, site preparation is going to be important, the demolition of the existing structures that had been declared by the substandard, plus the regrading of the site to deal with some of the drainage issues that that area experiences. And then beyond that, the redevelopment agreement, Exhibit B, describes the sources and uses and envisions that the balance of the tax increment financing funding will be used for facade enhancements and then site acquisition assistance. The schedule for the project would be that, assuming that the redevelopment agreement is approved, two weeks from today, because it would be on your agenda along with the bond ordinance and the CIP amendment for October 16th. It is anticipated the demolition would occur sometime this fall with hopefully some footings being installed before the weather would permit with vertical construction next spring. So that is the plan for the schedule and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Carl and Lyrian?
Thank you. Mr. Houston, the sketch you just had up there, could you explain the traffic flow within the property, how that works?
What is really envisioned now is that this is North 48th Street, North 50th Street. This is a private drive, but it will provide through access that will permit some traffic to access 48th Street or 50th Street without meandering through a convoluted parking lot. Now, if it is a private drive, it can be, it can be, traffic calming devices can be installed in that parking lot, meaning if there is a problem with speeders trying to use that as a cut through, because that's not the intent. But the owner and developer can install traffic platforms, traffic speed bumps, whatever may be the preference, if that develops into a problem. We don't really anticipate it to be a problem. It really permits the full utilization of 50th Street, which has greatly affected and greatly improved this area of North 48th Street redevelopment area.
So if, if I want to go to the retail establishment there, how do I, how do I negotiate?
With a full four-way signal here with a left turn lane, you'll have access in here from any direction, whether it's north or south, because of the signal that is being replaced right there. And so traffic will be able to enter the site at that point. And then it does loop around, there's a grade differential, so the traffic will loop around this way to access that retail building.
And then where's the front of the hotel?
Front of the hotel will be right here, facing to the south.
Will there be a drive-in, check-in area where you can pull in there or not?
I would envision a vestibule of some form or overhang. I'm not certain. I don't recall that on the elevation drawing, but most hotels do have that. I imagine that would be part of the design.
Okay. Okay. Lyrian?
Thanks, Tom.
That's not my phone, by the way.
My question is also a kind of a traffic flow question. The retail building, I know you haven't identified perhaps a use, but it appears that there's maybe a drive-through situation where in the color picture you have cars circling that retail establishment. Can you explain what that, what that purpose is? What purpose that serves?
Yeah, specific users have not been identified. I think it does permit, the access would permit a drive-through, but that's all pretty speculative at this point until users, but it would permit, the design would permit traffic to circle the building and then access back out to this, this long driveway between 48th and 50th.
So could you review again the potential allowable uses for that site? I mean, are we talking about a fast food restaurant or is that outside the definition of retail here or what would this be?
No, this is, this is the B2 zone that, it's a pretty broad, but you know, this is a 5,600-square-foot building, which isn't a very large building, but the B2 permissible uses is a pretty broad, all-encompassing use, permitted uses within that listing.
So could it be a fast food restaurant?
It could, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions?
Actually, I do, I guess if it is, I'm just, with the design, you showed, you know, the elevations and the facade improvements, how likely is it that those are implemented if in fact it is a national chain fast food restaurant?
Well...
Potentially they go out the window?
I think it's highly likely that the design that was presented, they are attached to the redevelopment agreement and they will have to be built or will have to explain to the city why it's not built.
Okay.
That's what the redevelopment agreement really requires. If there's substantial changes to the elevation drawings that were approved as part of the redevelopment agreement, either really at the billing permit stage, further questions are asked and further explanation has to be given.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Would anyone else like to testify on these items? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 21, amending Chapter 5.50 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to taxi cabs by amending Section 5.50.010 definitions to add a definition for transportation network company by adding a new section numbered 5.50.015 entitled Transportation Network Company exemption to provide that motor vehicles carrying passengers for hire solicited through transportation network companies shall not be considered taxi cabs and shall be exempted from the provisions of Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 5.50, and repealing Section 5.50.010 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
All right, before we take testimony, I'd like to explain to everyone that Councilwoman Cindy Lamb has left the chambers because she is recused from this item. Okay, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the council, Abby Latrell, Law Department. The ordinance in front of you is fairly self-explanatory. It was the city's belief that prior to this proposed amendment, that transportation network company drivers like Uber and Lyft likely fell within the definition of taxi cab drivers under the Lincoln Municipal Code and therefore fell under the regulations required of taxi cab drivers. And what this ordinance does is just simply exempts them from those licensure and testing requirements by the city.
So other questions? Jane?
I guess after having conversations with Jeff, he mentioned that the language doesn't specifically call out or identify that they're required to be in compliance with state regulations. Was there a reason why that language was omitted from this ordinance?
From the new language?
Right, because I think it, as you read it, it sort of absolves them from our requirements, but it doesn't specifically say that they do have other requirements that they must be in compliance with and those are the over, the Public Service Commission has oversight over this.
Sure. And that's why there, you'll see that there are two changes in the ordinance, first in the definitions section and then second in 5.50.015. And the language in the definitions section exactly mirrors the language in the state statute. And so if they fall within our definition, they should fall within the state's definition.
But on that point, even if we never mentioned it at all, it doesn't absolve them from complying with the state?
Correct. If they were operating and without being properly certified by the state, they would still be operating illegally within Lincoln.
Okay.
Can you tell a little bit about the certification process by the state then?
Sure. And this is found at Nebraska Revised Statute 75326, et cetera. And this was in 2015, 16. There, I can, you can find the requirements there, but the, the transportation network company is required to certify to the Public Service Commission a number of things, including that they perform a background check that is comprehensive as a criminal background check performed by the FBI. They have to certify that they do that, that there are a number of moving traffic violations that they can't exceed, which is four. They can't have more than one major traffic violation in the last three years. They cannot hire or permit to drive anyone who's been convicted of driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs for a period of seven years. And they can't permit someone to drive who's a registered sex offender or has been convicted of any offense, including fraud, motor vehicle felonies, or crimes involving property damage, theft, violence, or acts of terror. So it's a pretty broad background check that the TNCs have to certify that they are performing before the Public Service Commission will certify them to operate in Nebraska.
Okay, thank you very much.
John?
Yes, thank you very much for that explanation. What exactly does this change from our existing ordinance? And I understand that was passed before the Uber, Lyft entities came about, but I mean what, if they were considered the drivers, this Uber, this taxi cab driver, what changes? And how onerous is it to comply with the current city ordinance?
I think that the number of drivers who would fall under the definition of taxi cab drivers increased substantially. I don't have the exact figure in front of me and Uber, at least, and Lyft were, as I recall, fairly, couldn't provide exact numbers to us, but it would have increased the workload for the city substantially to perform these background checks and additional work for the police department to have all of them licensed, while technically they fell under the definition of taxi cab drivers. I think what the intent here is to, to bring practice in line with what our ordinance says.
But our ordinance had been, we just had, we had ignored it and passed on the Uber, Lyft drivers. Is that correct?
Can you repeat your question?
Well, if the, I think Mr. Kirkpatrick had done an opinion saying that under the existing ordinance we have, that the taxi cab drivers would include the drivers for Uber and Lyft and that type of entity, but we had never enforced that.
Correct.
So this ordinance says, "Well, forget what we didn't do and now we'll just waive it in the future." Am I, am I correct on that?
I can only speak to what the ordinance says and it exempts, it specifically exempts TNC drivers from our taxi licensing.
Okay. And could you be a little more precise on what those are and what that costs versus what's being done at the state level anyway by the transportation or that, I call them Uber, Lyft, just to be clarified rather than all this new nomenclature?
Sure. There's a fee that they, that the drivers present to the clerk's office and then LPD performs a background check.
How much is that fee?
I believe it's $10.
It's $5 to apply $10 for the license.
Okay, so $15, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
And Chief Blimeister is here. He may be able to speak more specifically to what the, what LPD's role in the process is.
Jeff Blimeister with the Lincoln Police Department. As, as parts of the previously existing resolution, we did some queries and in 2016, we had done approximately 141 background investigations for applicants seeking either a new taxi cab license or a renewal. And the estimations based upon our record staff is that a new license would take approximately 45 minutes and that a renewal would take 15 minutes. As part of this inquiry, I did not ask for a breakdown of how many were new versus how many were existing. But as stated by Abigail, we believed that, one, this would be a very large drain on the resources, on the personnel resources for both, excuse me, for transportation network companies to be able to vet them in a similar fashion. In addition, we took an in-depth look both at some statistical analysis and also anecdotally from the stories of our officers who are on the streets, who are actually seeing the impact of TNCs every single day. Our center team officers, who are mainly, the geographic location is the downtown area, oftentimes immediately following bar break, and they have seen a notable change in the ability for persons who are exiting those establishments to find rides quickly. And that common sense says that that would reduce the number of impaired drivers on the roadway. But also, and this is based upon their input, it removes people who are lingering on the streets, so therefore they do not have the propensity to either be a person responsible for a crime or to be a victim of a crime, therefore increasing the safety and security of our downtown area in what can be at times one of the most challenging Friday, Saturday nights for our officers. Second, we, we saw, and I've witnessed this firsthand, the change in particularly the north bottoms, that students that are involved in celebrations prior to Husker football games are utilizing this mode of transportation to move them from one location safely to another. In fact, we're often seeing streams of cars that are being requested via the apps and then moving them to another location. So anecdotally, we believe that it is making impact. Now, we did some statistical analysis, trend lines approaching when the induction of legislation at the PSC for transportation network companies. And what I asked for was DUI IRS in Nebraska and also alcohol-related accidents in Nebraska by year. And then I also localized that to Lincoln itself. And I can tell you that we... And I can tell you that we are seeing a steady decline in the number of total DUI arrests in Nebraska and also locally here in Lincoln. Now, one factor, we believe, is the TNCs, the proliferation of TNCs, but we cannot unequivocally point to that years and years of educational campaigns are not making a difference, or that enforcing actions year after year. But we do believe that it is a factor. As far as the DUI, excuse me, the accidents both in Lincoln and in the state of Nebraska regarding alcohol impairments, we are not seeing the same similar trend lines. They fluctuate over this particular time, and although there was reductions in two thousand and sixteen in both of them, it's a very much smaller data set, and we need time to continue to explore that.
I appreciate that, Chief. And I don't disagree, I think it's great, and I personally like the, the concept and have used it. I guess one of the things in doing your analyses, I would say that a couple of years ago, the city stepped up its encouragement of other taxi cab companies to come into town, and so we've seen a lot more taxis in that regard, and that may have some impact in the situation. And it's like you said, there's no empirical data per se, but if we have, so in no way am I suggesting we retard or curtail the, I'll just call them Uber lifts, I think it's either in TNCs, but, but having that licensing. Let me give you an example, I have some parents that have children, have students, and we have over forty thousand students in Lincoln, and some of them are staying, living at eight N, the student housing there, and they get free parking, but it's many blocks away over the viaduct. And those parents have come and said, gee, you own a parking lot across the street, we'll pay you to have our students, our children park there because we just want to very much ensure the safety of them. And so I guess I take that analysis and say, just in case, as we from the city, to ensure the public safety and welfare of our citizens and these forty thousand plus students, does it not make sense that in some fashion, we, we ensure that the Uber, Lyft drivers are, you know, have good backgrounds and so forth? And I, and in no way do I know of any case where that isn't present, nor do I know of that on the taxi cab drivers. But I'm, it seems to me that in this era of some very strange events, that we are Lincoln, Nebraska, but gosh, just one bad situation could be there, and yes, we're prevailing the DUI, so we're getting a lot of accomplishments, but are we missing that side of it that have some type of licensing, and maybe it's done to the Public Service Commission or something, but if it's fifteen dollars, I understand it may take you forty-five minutes and fifteen minutes for the renewals, as you cited, but I guess I'm thinking of the public safety of these students and our other citizens too, I mean, the other three hundred thousand. Are we missing something there?
I'll, I'll provide you my input on that, and certainly this delves into the philosophical discussions of government regulation and duplication of services. And I think that Abigail and/or Jeff will be able to look at this a bit, a bit further, but as part of this research project, research project, research, we, we looked at what is the PSC doing? We also sent our officers to training for transportation network companies and to try to get a, an idea of what type of vetting process and accountability process they have at the corporate level. And is there a perfect system, even if the city of Lincoln piggybacks upon the backgrounds that are completed by the private entity itself, by that which is replicated and mandated by the PSC, which is different? And Abigail will have to try to parse out the differences between taxis and TNCs by the PSC level, and then going into should the city of Lincoln replicate some of the same background vetting process? And ultimately, my recommendation was, is that based upon what we're, we know happens at the PSC, based upon what we're told and is seeing is happening at the private entity itself, I did not believe that the cost associated with that replication of services and the potential to impact the number of drivers here locally, that was the, the risk reward analysis that was completed. So that may provide you input or thought process.
Then why don't we take it a step further? Why don't we exempt, why do we even regulate the taxi cab drivers?
Exactly.
Why not let the PSC do that if that's doing it, and they're also private owners of the taxi cab companies?
That's my question on this thing is...
Why are we doing anything, save your one hundred and forty-one reviews each year?
Yeah, why are we, why are we doing this to taxi cab drivers and, and not to Uber, Lyft drivers? But the question to me, my mind is more pertinent is, why are we do, do we, are the, are the standards that the state PSC puts in place so deficient that we have to go further? That's the real question.
The standards are different, the standards are different.
But are they so, they so different, they're deficient in protecting the public?
Deficient is a harder term to be able to define, and that was, that was part of the discussions for the drafting of this particular ordinance. And there were input that was provided, and maybe Abigail or Jeff want to comment on, on that particular portion of it, or maybe not.
Jeff may have more information, but I know that there have been instances where the city denied licenses to people who the state had issued licenses to. So there, there is evidence that the city's standards resulted in something than the state's standards.
But wouldn't that apply, then, to this idea of leaving the Uber lifts to the state?
I think, I think we don't know because it hasn't happened yet. I can tell you that the, the requirements for the Uber lifts, for the TNCs at the state level are more than for the taxi cab drivers at the state level. That this, that the specific FBI-level criminal background check, as well as the very specific offenses, driving offenses, major and minor, that are prohibited by the TNC state statute are more detailed and more onerous on the TNCs than they are on the PSC for taxi cab drivers.
You're saying the state statutes discriminate against the Uber lifts and, and don't require a stringent for the taxi cab drivers?
It's a different scenario, whereas the PSC is required to actually perform the background checks, whereas the way that the state statute reads for the Ubers and Lifts is that the, the companies that Uber has to say, the, we put our drivers through these background checks. So it's a different model.
So the state of Nebraska does less, is deficient vis-à-vis the private sector?
I'm saying it's, it's different. The way that they license and certify taxi cab drivers and TNC drivers is different.
I just want to, well, Carl's.
Larry and then Carl.
This question's come up, because we've had people write to us asking, you know, are taxi cabs really needing the same form of regulation? And that's something that, prior to this hearing, posed to our city attorney, and I was under the impression from things the administration had said, and certainly can hear it today, that, that we'd be open to that, that we'd be open to changing the regulations on taxi cabs, but that there had not been a request to at this time. If that, in fact, changes, you know, based on testimony today or going forward, if, if taxi cabs are, companies are wanting something different from the Lincoln regulations, I think that, speaking for myself, I'm open to that, it sounds like others are as well.
Carl?
Yes, thank you. I've been on council six and a half years, and early on, we were, we had issues in downtown Lincoln because we did not have enough taxis, and that was before Uber and Lyft. And so it is a, it's a better situation now, and thank you, everybody who's involved, regardless of how you're involved, for helping to make things better for most people. But there is still this concern I have, where, you know, these, there and some other times too, there are individuals who are vulnerable, that, you know, are given, pardon the pun, a lift, and they, so you, so you want that background check, you want to make sure that that person is not a sex offender or, or something with a bad driving record or whatever it might be. So, Mr. Luttrell, you explained the statute that applied to the TNCs, but that does not apply to taxis, right?
It's a different model of how it's administered. So in order to be certified for the, for the PS, for the Public Service Commission to certify Uber and Lyft to drive and operate in Nebraska, Uber and Lyft have to demonstrate and certify, promise that they are doing all of the things that the statute requires. And so my understanding is that's different than the way that the PSC regulates taxi cab drivers, where the PSC is the one who's actually going in and, and making sure that the state statute is satisfied.
And Carl, to piggyback off that, a TNC may not permit, so this is statutory language for a TNC governed by the Public Service Commission, a TNC may not permit a person to serve as a driver who is to register as a sex offender, and it goes on with a litany of other offenses.
I can say too, the PSC also has, they certify at the beginning, that's how they are regulated and authorized to drive, and then the PSC has audit authority to go in and audit the files to make sure that these companies are compliant with our state statute.
Okay, if I'm hearing from my colleagues, I think, I mean, we're, we're all in favor of consistency, of treating Uber and Lyft drivers and, and taxi drivers similarly as, as much as we can. And, and what's proposed for us today, does, does this help us get there?
I'll take you. The consistency, I would agree. Consistency, consistency creates an equitable playing field for all private entities. Unfortunately, that consistency does not exist at the level of the PSC in the regulation there. Philosophically, if all, if that was equal, the Lincoln Police Department would be advocating for, to avoid those replication of services because it does take a significant amount of time. Now, I also come and speak from a profession where there is really no greater vetting process involved in the hiring of particular employees, and that ranges from complex ecological examinations to health examinations to a polygraph, which most of the general public does not have to take. And even those in-depth mechanisms are not perfect in nature, and so we have to, we have to constantly be striving for this particular balance. And certainly, if we find evidence and we, if, if offenses come, we will evaluate what was the screening mechanisms used in advance of that, if a crime were to be reported to us as a result of one of these TNCs, we would follow up on that, and we may be back in front of you in this particular process.
Just as a follow-up, again, I, I'm just confused because you're saying the PSC does, the Public Service Commission investigates all the taxi cab drivers, and now our clerk's shaking her head.
No. And as a point of clarification, Abby did state that the TNCs are required to do FBI level, whereas the city only does local.
Yes.
So we're not getting a United States-wide criminal background on individuals, we're only getting local level, and the PSC does not do criminal histories on the taxi cab drivers, we are the ones that are doing the criminal histories.
Thank you, Teresa.
I, I'm still somewhat confused, though, so the, the Public Service Commission just does local?
The Public Service Commission just requires the TNCs to, to do an FBI level, and then for the taxi cabs, they are require, are relying on the city to do the local level, and all we do is the local level, we don't do an FBI level of criminal history.
Does the PSC do an FBI?
No, they don't do anything on taxi cabs, that I'm aware of.
I guess later I'll ask more questions on the state statute because that just doesn't make sense. I'm, anyway, I, I just, and I'm just trying to reach clarification here because there's so much...
There is ambiguity, there's ambiguity, John.
Imagine trying to run a taxi cab service, then, or an Uber.
And I, I hear you saying, chief, that the state statute relies on the Uber lifts, the TNCs, to do their checks and they're subject to audit, and that's fine. And if they say the FBI level, that's fine. I, I'm confused why this, the states, I, I just, I have a hard time believing the state statute just says, well, you, cities or locals, you do this, and you only have to do a local, it just doesn't make sense. So I, I'm gonna look for more clarification.
You're, you're telling us that you think government makes sense all the time?
So, yeah. Again, I'm just asking a lot of questions because I really get confused on these different levels of what we're seeing and where the problem is, and maybe there's, just for the, I, I don't want to create impediments, I want to encourage all these entities because they're all serving good services. I know the way the PSC, the Public Service Commission regulates taxi cabs, they're on their rates and on their hours, they have to be twenty-four-seven or anything, so there's quite a bit of regulation, which the Uber lifts don't have, and I'm just, so, I mean, there's some, already allowing some good things there, and, okay.
Penny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, we started this conversation, and I thought we were saying that the Uber and Lyft drivers, the transportation network drivers, were getting an easier pass to be certified. As we continue, it sounds like the, with an FBI level check, they're actually being more stringently vetted than the Public Service, Service Commission requires from taxi drivers?
That, that is my understanding, on the criminal history portion of it, yes, at the PSC level. And if these statutes were written in a linear format and not empowered by rules and regulations, which is also part of this whole process, it would be much easier to compare. But I just want to point you back to this discussion, this change, started with, for at least us, on TNCs alone. It doesn't, it doesn't traverse into, well, should we do the same? I know it does for you for taxi cabs.
Okay, other questions of these folks? All right. Thank you very much, and we'll take, anyone else who is here to testify in favor of this ordinance? Now, anyone opposed to this ordinance may testify. Stand up right away, or I'll call the next item. There you go.
He'll do it.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Mitchell, fifty-four forty, Old Street in Omaha, and I'm the president of Happy Yellow Checker Cab Company, and I also operate Courthouse Husker and Safeway Taxi Cab, and of course, we're here in Lincoln as well. So, I guess as a father and as a son of parents that are older, and I understand public safety, and I understand that's why we're all here, is to make sure that that happens, and done this for seventeen years, and I've met with thousands of potential drivers, and first I want to say the process has been easy, and I've never lost a, a great driver because of it. And when we started operating in Lincoln approximately four years ago, we were pretty happy to see that you guys had even further requirements, one of which was really important, was having knowledge of the city of Lincoln and be able to travel around the city at the best route, the safest route, et cetera. One which, you know, my wife would probably argue I couldn't pass. Anyhow, no, I think it's necessary, I think it's important, but I just want to say that it's not a burden, the process at all. In fact, as a company owner, I would have no problem paying a higher fee to see it done for not only our benefit, but for the citizens in both Lincoln and Omaha. Maybe I can clear a little bit of this up, but also my attorney, Andy Pollock, is here too, and he can kind of clear up the comparison between what is required at the state level for TNC and also taxi cabs. We kind of have lived this, obviously, for the last few years, and he can quickly draw some conclusions. I do have something here that shows the difference between what the state of Nebraska and the city of Lincoln currently would have if this were to, were to get voted in, the difference between what a TNC requirement would be versus a taxi cab. Certainly heard you guys bring up the fact that we could
Thank you.
change the way we do things, but I think that, and I, I wholeheartedly believe that what we do today to vet our drivers is extremely important. We talked about national background checks, we didn't hear a lot of conversation about MVRs. As we all know, people get DUIs, people get speeding tickets. Part of our process is we run an MVR every month on every driver, because things happen and sometimes they forget to tell us. We also do a DOT physical on every driver. Let's face it, our health changes, sometimes we, you know, it's because of age and other things like that. There's a lot of serious illnesses out there that can affect our passenger's safety, and that's really not in anybody's regulations as far as the tameness of a DOT physical, which is the same criteria we have of our over-the-road truck drivers and things like that. That's a long list of things to look at, obviously, I understand, again... at. Obviously, I understand you guys will probably want to read it later. But I've also got some additional information here, and I'll just kind of briefly read the first two sentences. And this is written by Nate Kellison, who's our general manager here in Lincoln. And we're, of course, part of a national organization, and they sent us information about TNCs and the taxi industry. But "In 2017, Massachusetts passed a new law requiring rideshare drivers to undergo private and public vetting, the same requirements of a taxi driver. On April 6 of this year, Forbes.com and several other reputable news outlets reported that 8,200 of the 70,000 Massachusetts rideshare drivers were disallowed to continue because they did not pass these background checks. Nearly 20% of that amount were, have a history of violent crime." So, we all know violent crimes on the rise. And, you know, I think this process is very important to handle that. So, ma'am, here's those documents as well that
Thank you.
that Nate provided.
One of these?
I'm sorry. Yes. Briefly, you guys talked a little bit about transportation network companies and taxi cabs. And of course, some of the differences are rate regulation. Our rates are the same for our passengers, 24/7 every day. We don't change our rate amounts. We are required to have a meter, so that that rate cannot be manipulated, TNCs, of course, though. We also have a vehicle ID and a plating requirement, just to make sure people know that they're actually getting in a taxi cab. And of course, we have a duty to serve all passengers of all types. They do not. And we also have to operate in all parts of the city, and they do not. And then we also have to work all parts of the day. And I just want to clarify that, so everybody understood that. Again, just to paraphrase, I've never lost a good driver to this process. And we're certainly willing to pay more. I think it's necessary. And at the end of the day, I guess I'm trying to figure out how this benefits the citizens of Lincoln.
Okay. No questions? John?
Well, we had a little confusion earlier, Mr. Mitchell, on the FBI check. Could you talk about the difference between state requirements for, I guess, taxi cab companies, what the city does versus the
Sure, Ken.
Uber, Lyft, and so forth?
Can I actually get you guys, I'll just briefly read this, because I quickly sent a note to my guys in Omaha, so I wanted to be able to speak accurately on this. A taxi permit in Lincoln, I'll just run through these four different areas. I'm gonna run through what's required in Lincoln, what's required in Omaha, at the state level, and then what's required by the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. It's a brief list. So, taxi permit in Lincoln, local background check conducted by LPD includes a partial fingerprint, it's $5 for the background check. Then, successful completion of a test to prove that the applicant is familiar with local landmarks within the city of Lincoln, basically proving that they know the city. Third, complete the physical. Fourth, it costs $10 to receive the permit. In Omaha, there's a local background check conducted by Omaha Police Department, including a partial fingerprint. They have to do, again, show that they've completed a physical, and it costs $4 for the permit. State of Nebraska is regulated by the Public Service Commission. National background check includes full set of fingerprints, ensure that the driver is free of drugs and alcohol, like a drug screen at that time, obtains a taxi permit required by the municipality. Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, LB97 requires FBI-level fingerprint background to be deducted by the National State Patrol, the Nebraska State Patrol, for drivers that will transport state wards or dependent adults. So, not all of our drivers want to transport for HHS, that's an optional thing. And then as far as our best practices and what we do to vet our drivers, because it only makes sense as a business owner to do this, much like many of you that have had businesses, I'm sure you've vetted your employees as well. But we do a DOT physical. We also do APS and CPS, Adult Protective Services and Child Protective Services, on every driver to make sure that they qualify for that. And then we also run the MVR every single month, because things change with their driver history. So, there's those four things. And we'll be glad to email that to you if you'd like to see it.
With what you read, Mr. Mitchell, it's, if I heard it right, it sounds like at the state level, the FBI check is only done if you're doing custodial or
Health and Human Services. But I'm gonna have Andy speak to that, because he works closely with the Nebraska State Patrol.
I'm just trying, again, identify the differences. And so...
LB97, it's a requirement if they're gonna transport for HHS. But the Public Service Commission, I just want to make sure I read this correctly, does a national background check with a full set of fingerprints.
So, is that the FBI that we're talking about, or is that just?
It's just a national background check, not an FBI background check.
So, the state statute on the TNCs, or the Uber, Lyft, so we understand, that requires the company, in this case, say Uber, would do an FBI check?
They provide a background check, I don't know at what level, but perhaps Andy could speak to that.
Okay. And then just, I'm just trying to clarify here, that at the state level even, it's just done by the Uber company, using this example, but not submitted, but it would be subject to audit by PSC, or somebody could audit it to see if they actually did it?
From what I understand. But I don't know if that process is
Maybe your attorney would be
I don't know if that process is in place. And I think there's just a couple investigators for the
But you have, the taxi cab companies have to forward that to the state, as well as the licensing to the city?
We do. As far as have to, but we do.
And you do the medicals. Is that a state requirement?
It's not. We exceed the state requirement. It's just a normal physical.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Want anyone else to testify?
Mr. Chair, while we're transitioning, would you help the new guy understand what an MVR is, as part of this alphabet soup?
It's a report of the driver's motor, go ahead.
Sorry, you guys keep throwing it out there, and I have no idea what it means.
Basically, a conviction, a list of convictions against your driver's license.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Bill Malloy. I've been a taxi driver in Lincoln for about six years. And since Lyft and Uber came to town, I testified at the legislature when they first applied. And I said, well, I don't mind anybody, more drivers, it's just that I want them to jump through the same hoops that I have to. You know, and they couldn't, they didn't give me a direct answer on what was the difference between them picking up people and getting paid for their service than me. And so, they just allowed them to operate illegally for two years before they got the okay. And some of the things that, like the mayor in the papers said the other day is a cheap alternative to taxi drivers. Well, if you ask anybody that's taken an Uber from downtown Minneapolis, I mean downtown Lincoln, on a Friday, Saturday night, home, where it cost them $15 to get downtown, it might cost them $50 to $60 to get home for the same exact ride. And we charge the same price both, both times, every day of the week, any time of the day. So, as far as a cheaper alternative, they're not really that cheaper for most rides, especially on the weekends. And we do not discriminate against people that don't have a credit card. We pick up everybody anywhere in town, and they have discriminated against people all over town, because they didn't like the looks of them, or they didn't like where they were going. And the taxi service services seven days a week. And before they came to town, the taxi drivers took care of the elderly, the kids, and students. We have a program with students to give them a free ride home when they've partied too much. And the reason they like Uber now is because Uber will drive them from party to party to party, where they can't do that with us. All we can do is drive them home after they've partied a little bit too much. Well, anyway, we used to work, let's say, Monday through Thursday in service to city, and then the weekends were kind of like our bonus, you know, where we made our money. But now, with Uber and Lyft here, they've taken away that. It's like, a lot of drivers have, you know, lost 40 to 50% of their earnings. And, you know, and it's hard for, unless you're really a good driver, and you have a lot of personal affairs, you know, it's hard to make it. And I just think that a lot of the Uber and Lyft drivers are doing it as a hobby, to socialize with people. Look, I mean, I'll admit it, they, they go out there to try and meet a girl or whatever. And they're not in it to really make the money, they're just, if they can make, break even, they're happy. They're just out there socializing, you know. And I just think that if you're gonna allow them to operate, they should have to have the same regulations as us. Thank you. Miss, you got any questions?
Mr. Malloy, from the taxi cab driver standpoint, we're talking about some of the licensing, let's say, for you as a driver versus Uber, Lyft. If that were a level playing field, but the Uber, Lyft still has the ability to change rates differently, I guess that's
They call it surge pricing.
Yeah. And I guess maybe that's, I don't know, I understand, that's kind of advantage they have over you, because you're subject to the Public Service Commission on your rates.
Yeah. The taxi cab companies are, have a, pretty much a fixed rate. There's like three companies, and two of them are like within 10 cents a mile charge, I think it is. So, they're real comparable and stuff. And another company, who we came in to compete against, Servant Cab, they, they were like charged way, way too much. But the surge pricing is, like I said, if someone could take a cab downtown for 15 bucks at 8 o'clock and to go home at 1 o'clock, it might cost them $50 to $60. And they're kind of like stuck if they put their order in, because if they cancel, they get charged $7.50. And then they have a minimum, I think, of $7.50, $10, where our minimum is $5. So, you know, we take care of the elderly people in this town, and we take care of the kids and the people that are, you know, let's face it, not as fortunate enough to pay $40 for a cab ride. But, you know, I just want a level playing field, that's, that's all I'm looking for. Because I think my service, personal service can, can do it. But when, you just, they're trying to skim off the top, let's put it that way. You know, and if they can operate without any background checks or anything like that, it's just ridiculous, you know, because they've had trouble all over the country, you know. California just fined them $1 million for having drivers show up drunk, you know. I mean, to think that that kind of stuff doesn't happen here is, is kind of naive. Thank you. Miss, you got any questions?
Sir?
Hi. My name's Jim Johnson, in Lincoln, 5008 Northwest Cummings Street, and I own Leisure Taxi here in town. I have a couple of concerns. One is, I do not in any way want the city's requirements for potential drivers to have to have a physical and to have a background check done by the police department. And to take this test, I want in no way for that to go away. I mean, that is a realm of professionalism that's forcing my people to go through. And I can hold them to that through the course of their employment. And I want it to remain. And the chief, I understand where he's at with having to take his people to do these background investigations, but it's not that difficult. They're just doing some keystrokes on a computer and getting it out. If it requires us to pay more to keep that, then I'll pay more. My drivers don't pay for any of that. I do. The other concerns I have is this. And I spent 32 years in law enforcement, and I spent two years working for the Public Service Commission, and I am just absolutely confounded here. The Public Service Commission doesn't do any background checks. They couldn't tell you who's driving cab for me if their life depended on it. Okay? All they're required to do is tell Lyft and Uber, you have to do this. I don't even know if anybody's checking to see if it's done. My other concern is, when I hire someone, and the city denies their license, and I go down to the hay market two days later and see this same person driving for Uber, tells me that nothing got done. They just hired him. Okay? And that's happened more than once. The other issue is, the way the state statute was written to allow TNCs to come in here, they allowed them to come in and not put any markings of any type on any of the cars, based on the premise that they didn't own the cars. What they created was something that is absolutely unenforceable. No one, not us, not the police department, not the Public Service Commission, can stand on the corner and say, that guy is Uber, that guy is not. And I'm here to tell you, I'm there every night. You have kids out there in mom and dad's car, claiming to be Lyft and Uber, standing on the sidewalk, hawking rides for cash money, because they can't run the credit cards through the system. Okay? So, that needs to be addressed at some point. That's a bigger concern to me, and it should be to the city, bigger concern than even having Lyft and Uber here. Then I would like you to do some research. You take other cities the size of Lincoln, such as Austin, Texas, Eugene, Oregon, Kansas City, which is way bigger, and you look, look at what they did. They came in and they said, Lyft and Uber, you can operate here if you want, but you are going to allow our police department to vet your drivers, and they will have the physical. And in all those places, Lyft and Uber pulled out. And if you think it's because they were afraid to pay for a vetting process, no, just because they wouldn't have had any drivers left, or at least a good share of them wouldn't be allowed to drive. That's all I got.
Other questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. It was Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we're kind of looking at the licensing. If, if that's done for the drivers on an even basis, does the disparity on the ability of an Uber, Lyft to change their rates and so forth concern you? Are you willing to compete in that environment? Because I'm looking at, we got public health and safety, and I want to have a level playing field, and I want government not to pick favorites.
They use a system called progressive pricing. I like to look at it as predatory pricing, because they do have the ability to go up in rates 10 times, and I'm not sure is it six or eight times they can go up. So, what, what you paid, you know, let's say, just as an example, you paid $10 to get downtown at 2 o'clock in the morning when you want to go home, they can go eight times that rate. It's $80. And most people catch on to that pretty quick, especially when they get their credit card bill. Others don't care, because mom and dad's paying for it, you know. So, they have that predatory pricing, whichever you choose to use it. Do I see it as a problem? I see it as an unfortunate event for the city and the people that are here looking for good quality transportation. Doesn't affect me any. My rates are controlled by the state. Day, night, holidays, doesn't matter.
Well, I've used Uber, for example, when I was doing some recent medical recoveries. And they, I always, when I ordered, they told me what the amount was gonna be, other than waiting time if I was late getting out to my curb. And then I'd push okay if I was willing to pay that. So, I guess I kind of look, now, but someone else, one of the drivers, I believe, said something about you're charged $7.50 even if you don't use them. Now, that didn't occur, but I wasn't doing it at midnight on Friday night.
Yeah, they have a cancellation fee that they do charge.
Well, okay, if you cancel, but if, but you have to push a button to accept it. At least I did in the middle of the day. But regardless, I guess I kind of look at the pricing, yes, you're regulated. If, to me, the consumers will pick up pretty quickly and say, well, shoot, we'll go to the taxis or something rather than pay $80. If their mom and dad are, I don't know, you can't fix a dumb, I guess, but
I just don't know. I've never played with their app, other than look at, look at it jump up. On, like on football games, home football games, they start out higher than what anybody else in town is. And then by the end of the football game, it's unbelievable what they pay. And you get half-intoxicated people who've been tailgating all day, or who just crawled out of a bar downtown, they'll pay it. They'll pay it. And have they, have they helped clear the downtown out? Absolutely. You know, you can't deny that. But did they do it safely? I don't think so. Not when they stop on O Street, and you have four or five in a row, and they have cars backed up two blocks. That's not a safe issue. They're just sitting there waiting for someone to say, we want a ride.
Ironically, I've talked to some of these Uber drivers, and several of them said, we don't do Friday nights, we don't want to deal with those students and vomit in their car.
Here's the other thing is, on nights when there's Maybe, but here's the other thing is, on, on, on nights when there's events going on, concerts, whatever it may be, take a ride in your car, go down behind the post office on North Eighth, go up on West O, I mean, on East O where the old Super Saver used to be, it's now Lutheran Health, and you'll see all the Lyft and Uber drivers in those parking lots, and they're all standing there with their phones. And because one of the things that causes the rate to jump up is busy. If they're not getting calls covered, they'll jump that rate up. And them drivers are all sit there with their phones and wait until that multiplier goes to the point that they want to operate, then they'll go downtown and start picking people And I want, one other thing, just to take a look at it, when, when Uber left Austin, Austin got grant money, and they created their own TNC, it's called Ride Austin, you can look it up on the net. And they are running their own TNC company, and they're doing it very, very professionally, very good. They are competition to the, to the cab drivers, but they are a legitimate, honest, equal competitor. Okay? And the best part about it is the city of Austin is taking that revenue instead of some company in Northern California. And bottom line is, I really, I have concern, especially from my drivers, but for me, I, I, I don't think that they sustain their current business model. They're going to fold. They, they lost six point eight billion dollars last year. They can't continue to operate the way they do. So I don't have a lot of concern with it, but there's a lot of issues I do, and they need to be addressed.
Thank you very much, sir.
Chairman Christensen and members of the city council, my name is Andy Pollak. I'm with the Rembert Ludkey Law Firm here in town at eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite 300. I'm here on behalf of Happy Cab, you heard Mr. Mitchell, who is the president and owner of Happy Cab and the affiliate companies, as well as one of your, one of their drivers. And I'm going to follow up a little bit on what Mr. Mitchell said. I'd also be glad to answer questions on the kind of murky legal questions that affect or that relate to the state requirements. I was involved in the drafting of LB six twenty-nine, I worked with Senator Mello and Senator Smith on that, and I'd be glad to try to answer questions on that front. First of all, this is not an attack on Uber. This is our opposition to this particular ordinance, really has nothing to do with Uber, it has nothing to do with Lyft, it has nothing to do with Happy Cab. Happy Cab has been in Lincoln providing service since the Public Service Commission granted them authority back in 2012. I was, had the privilege to be part of that proceeding. It was driven largely by pressure that former Senator Bill, Bill Avery put on the Public Service Commission to look at possible competition. I think Happy Cab's done a good job of helping allay some of the concerns and some of the problems we have with drunk driving, as have Uber and Lyft. I don't think there's any doubt about that. But there is another public safety aspect of that, and, and it has to do with the, the safety of that particular driver. It's an important benefit that your city ordinance combined with state law provides, making sure that the drivers are vetted, that their criminal background is known, and also the, from the Lincoln ordinance side, that their medical record shows that they're safe to and competent to behind, to be behind a wheel. They're transporting your children. They're transporting children of parents from all across the state of Nebraska, like Councilman Camp said, the forty thousand students who are here at the university or Wesleyan or Southeast. They're transporting our mothers and fathers, they're transporting people like Councilman Smith who needs a ride because of a repaired knee. And those people are potentially vulnerable people in, in a, in an automobile. If you think about it, step back and think about it, being a passenger in an automobile is much different than being a customer in a retail business. It's similar perhaps to being a patient in a doctor's office, but it's more dangerous or potentially more dangerous because you're in a vehicle that's controlled by one person, and that's the driver, and that's the driver who has to, under current ordinance, has to be licensed by the, by the city of Lincoln. We believe this is an important public safety measure. When I, when I approached Happy Cab about this particular ordinance or the proposed ordinance, thanks to Mr. Patrick here bringing it to my attention over a month ago, and I appreciate his being upfront with it, they didn't like it, but they were open to the idea of, of flat level playing field that would relieve their drivers of the ordinance as well. They, they considered that. After a couple of weeks, they said, you know what, we've had second thoughts, and we don't think that that's the route to go. This ordinance in their mind, according to what they told me and what you heard today, is an important tool, it's an important measure of reinforcing the company's belief that public safety is paramount. Even if it transcends, i- i- it transcends the inconvenience to the drivers, it transcends the very slight cost to the company. Public safety is paramount. This kind of ordinance helps reinforce the company's belief in their drivers' minds, and we believe it's, it's critical, the public safety. To talk a little bit about the comparison with state law, it is convoluted. This was all the subject of negotiations between the cab companies, who by the way did not oppose LB six twenty-nine that Senator Mello introduced. In fact, I worked hours with him prior to the introduction of that legislation, and by the time it got to hearing, we actually supported the bill, which allowed Uber and Lyft to legally provide service in, in Nebraska. That bill has a criminal background search requirement. Does that mean I'm done?
One more minute.
Okay, one more minute, thank you. I think it can wrap up in one minute. It, it requires Uber and Lyft on their own to voluntarily submit a criminal background requirement to the state of Nebraska, to the Public Service Commission. The PSC, you've heard correctly, does not have its own requirement for, for taxi cabs or any other type of provider, but they do vis a vis, a Department of Health and Human Services law have a requirement that it has the effect of making those cab companies, Happy Cab, require all of their drivers to go through a criminal background search. They're fingerprinted, those tests are sent to the FBI, a national search is done, that's required under a current law, and that's law that we actually referenced when I was in Senator Mello's office negotiating this with a Lyft lobbyist and attorney. It's a statute that's referred to in the TNC statute, and I'd refer it to your attention. It's section eighty-one, six, comma, one twenty. And again, that applies to cab drivers because they're providing services to the Department of Health and Human Services. So while the PSC doesn't require it, it is required of cab drivers. It's that statute that we refer to in the bill that ultimately was a compromise that puts the silly onus on TNCs, not to go through that fingerprinting process, but to make sure that they had a test that produced equivalent results to that criminal background search conducted by the FBI. So one is a direct route through the FBI, the other one is supposed to produce the same results. Hopefully that clarifies it, it's kind of hard to spit out about three weeks of negotiations in, in one minute, but hopefully that clarifies, and I'd be glad, glad to try to answer more questions.
Questions for Andy? John?
On your last point again, just so I'm not as fuzzy or unclear, so on the FBI check, or am I calling that wrong, or, so it is required, or who, who has to do it, or is it voluntary, or just done by like Uber Lyft, and then they keep it on file, or?
For Uber, and I, I, I used the word voluntarily incorrectly there. State, let's talk about TNCs first. State law requires TNCs or Uber Lyft to have every driver undergo a criminal background search that is tantamount to the FBI search. That was built into state law, and it was, it was based on promotional material that Uber and Lyft had in their own, in their own materials that they gave to Senator Mello. For taxi cabs, taxi cabs, Happy Cab, all drivers are eligible to provide transportation for Medicaid patients. They're eligible to provide Medicaid service through the Department of Health and Human Services. In order to do that, they have to go through that FBI criminal background search. So effectively, all cab companies have to go, or all cab drivers have to go through that same search.
And is that just done by them? Do they file it with the PSC or the city, or is that?
It is not. I, I don't know what they file with the city. They, they don't file it with the, with the PSC, they have to certify that it's been conducted and turned up clean. I think it's, it's subject to audit, just like the TNC searches would be subject to audit by the Public Service Commission.
So the difference between the current system in the city, whether or not it's enforced on the TNCs, the Uber lifts, this would remove that, and so trying to see the differences versus if we just left well enough alone and enforced what we had, if they're doing it anyway supposedly, and I, I recognize that Chief Blimeister is concerned about extra workload at the forty-five minute, fifteen minutes a week, but I'm, that's secondary to public safety, but. So if we leave it as is, does that keep the level playing field as far as licensure? I know that, I don't want to get into rates and all, that's more a competitive thing as far as I'm concerned on the marketplace, but.
If you, if you did not adopt the proposed ordinance, would it keep things the same? It should, if that, if that, if the current ordinance is being enforced as to TNC drivers, which I, I heard today it's not.
Now, our city clerk, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, currently, we are not licensing TNC drivers.
But our ordinance does, since the city attorney said they're also covered by our old taxi cab, they should be.
Correct.
So we're just, we haven't enforced it yet.
Correct.
And this legislation is to say, well, maybe we still won't enforce it anyway, legitimize it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just, just right into this, 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 this.
Talk from there.
I'm sorry, your attorney could say something since he's still up here.
I, I would say, you know, I think one, one thing that I've heard today is, could you take the, the filings or the, the searches that are conducted at the state level and submit them to the city? I think that's something that we would be open to talking about. That would put an onus on us to somehow tender to the city, the FBI conducted searches, it would put an onus on the TNCs to provide their, their own searches. Certainly, that's something, I, I understand the administrative costs to the city, and that's something that we're sensitive about, but public safety seems to be, seems to be paramount, or should be paramount.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Very good. Is there a rebuttal from city staff? Very good. Next item, please.
All right, next is item twenty-two, Change of Zone one seven zero two one, Application of Sierra Investments LLC for a change from B three commercial and R six residential to B four Lincoln Center Business District on property generally located at twenty fifty-one K Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mark Hunsaker, appearing on behalf of Sierra Investments LLC, doing business as Glenn's Body Shop. Eleven years ago, the land where Glenn's Body Shop exists today was rezoned for that purpose over the objections of city staff, and they were being moved out of their previous location by condemnation due to the Antelope Valley project. The design for the building was approved by the Capital Environments Commission, and as you know from driving by it, it is an attractive building that's very well landscaped and very well maintained. Fortunately, business has been good for the last eleven years, and Glenn's needs to expand. The design of the addition that we propose will be identical to the existing building, and it has already been approved by the Capital Environments Commission. As we came through this process, there was also a special permit that accompanied this change of zone request, which was approved by the Planning Commission. The Planning Department had asked for landscaping of the site, the, both, including the existing site and the addition, which far exceeds any standards that have ever been applied to a site like this. They also asked for street trees to be planted in both K Street and Twentieth Street, and Glenn's has agreed to do both of those things. The Public Works Department wanted to eliminate the west access, and we offered an alternative that would not eliminate it now, but would give the city the opportunity to eliminate both K Street curb cuts if the use of this property ever changes. And that was adopted by the Planning Commission, that was final action, which has not been appealed. So the only thing in front of you today is the change of zone, which is recommended unanimously for approval, it was recommended for approval by the Planning, Planning Department as well, and we hope you'll approve this rezoning to expand this family business. I'd answer any questions you might have.
John?
I'd just like to say something, I'm not testifying for, whatever, but I know when we did Antelope Valley and Glenn's Car Star was over there on P Street, I was just amazed because they literally closed down for a year, and I think, I don't know how they worked with their employees, probably kept them on payroll, and then, I mean, closed down for a year, didn't even have another location, and they went through a lot of hoops.
Yeah, this was.
I've never seen a business do that before.
This, this location was really the last possibility that existed anywhere near the downtown area where they wanted to stay. And we were very happy that it was approved at that time, and it's been proven to be a, a good decision.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Hunsaker?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please. Oh, excuse me, would anyone else like to testify on this item? Now we can go to the next item.
Okay, that concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions, report of new impending claims against the city for the period of September first through the fifteenth was introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second. Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion?
We do have the motion to amend, the formal motion to amend from the city attorney's office on line thirteen to the claim of Ann Ramju to be removed from the list of denied claims.
Who will move that one? So move. Moved by Carl, seconded by Cindy. Discussion on this? Okay, please call the roll. On the amendment.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayle Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend. There are three other claims that can be removed. Can I make all in one motion for all three of them at one time?
Yes, you could, and we can discuss it.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the claim by Schmidt, Blaine, and Said.
Second.
Okay, moved by Benny, seconded by Cindy. Can we just have a quick, quick review of each one of those as far as who they, what they're, they're doing?
Yes, this would be, I'm sorry, did you want to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, this would be to remove the names of Lyle, Schmidt, Zohal, Said, and Chris Bland from the denied claims.
Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayle Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then is item seventeen, the Conservation Eastman Agreement with PCE Incorporated, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second. Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayle Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading, are items eighteen through twenty-two. Ordinances on third reading, just one item. Ordinance approving, number one, amendment to the master site lease from the city and the county of Lancaster, Nebraska, to the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission. Number two, amendment to the master lease agreement from the commission to the county and the city. And three, the issuance of not to exceed one point seven million of the commission's tax-supported lease rental revenue refunding bonds, series twenty seventeen, introduced by Gayle Baird. So moved. Second.
Moved by Leary and seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Show?
Yes.
Camp? Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items twenty-four through thirty. Ordinances first reading are items thirty-one through thirty-two. Our pending list date certain are items thirty-three through thirty-five, and our regular pending list are items thirty-six through thirty-nine.
Okay. Before I take, entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to invite those members of the public who are here about claims to, for any clarification on what happened tonight, this afternoon, talk to the city attorney. He'll make sure you're clear on what's next for you. Okay?
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd move for adjournment, and also, again, remind folks that we will not meet next Monday in observance of Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Cindy. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned.